I think it depends on the chair.
I'm just gonna share that with you, so I didn't keep my own copy.
Knowing needs to speed her on up.
Yeah, don't want me to get angry, it's not a good thing. Gotta keep it slow, Travis, that's your job.
I have a copy that I gave you, uh, corrections.
And we can't even go down to the committee.
Not an option.
Not an option.
Misplaced one already.
All I'm gonna mention there is, the board has, I'm just gonna mention Craig's report made it. Actually, I don't even need it, just use the ones that were revised today.
Did you get the sample, some pancakes yet?
Oh yeah.
Did ya?
So, this wind coordinates it.
Yeah?
We should date it. Whenever you see today, that's the one we're referring to.
That's okay today.
Jean could end up late again. I go party myself when I got four minutes.
We'll go by Travis's. You don't have time to deserve it.
We have this clock at the office, and I'll reset it like every couple of months, and it'll get about five to eight minutes fast. But even if you don't change it for months, it never gets more than five to eight minutes fast. So, we reset it, it goes fast, and then it holds.
So turn it five minutes slow, and it'll catch up, and you don't need to do it every day.
Yeah, it's kinda like when you're golfing, and you adjust for your slice, and then you hit it straight.
Then you forget where you were, and by the third shot, you're just limbo, right?
Right.
Bet you our computer holds that same distance. I think I remember that.
Oh, nine o'clock, I'll call this meeting of the Mercer County Commission to order. Is there any additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, under Rhodes, I'd like to add this, a mill levy question. It'll just be a report, no action to be taken, be very brief.
What would be the question? Other business, we should probably add executive session. And that will be when Todd gets here, sometime with Todd.
At any particular spot, or just?
Just other business.
Or just put it in there?
Yeah, it might be the last thing we do, or it might be...
When the chairman calls it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other additions? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Wayne, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean, any discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Minutes of the June 22 meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve them minutes from June 22, 2022.
Okay, motion by Liza, approve the minutes from June 22, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean, any corrections or additions? Discussion? Seeing none, Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Bills?
I thought we didn't have any.
Surprise.
Surprise. We did get the answer on the question on the bill for the... I suspect that you did not, gotta try and repeat the answer because I might say a word or two wrong, but he explained it.
Are we supposed to get rain today again? Fourth of July rain is always a blessing.
Unless you cut hay the day before, right?
I hauled hay the day before, I was scrambling.
Man, these things are green.
Yeah.
My neighbor, distant neighbor cuts my hay, and then we were baling and hauling the day before like crazy to get everything in. It's all inside.
We're just looking at our bills and approving them, so we'll be kinda quiet.
Talking is not good, that's when they have a question.
That's right. Diane, was part of the canvassing board?
Yes.
He signed the guest sheet, okay.
I'm looking at your invoice.
You didn't write it?
Next time.
Sounds like a bunch of garbage to me.
Samantha, you gotta put these closer together.
Oh yeah. You want me to use like five sheets of paper?
You've got a little red door.
No, the times.
You don't approve the invoice? Nope. You just report.
I don't know, there's a bunch of bills, they're all packed together, helping from all different things.
Is this a credit card? I think it's a credit card.
I bet you not, it's why.
Yeah, it was last time when I came in, I was like, ooh, somebody signed this up, looks good.
Only a $550 bill from...
It's a little paper.
That must be just an Ollie or something.
Diagnostics.
They're getting smarter, they're sending up in different invoices.
Did you ever get the credit card name switched?
It's kinda nice having your road reader, isn't it?
It's kind of an important thing.
That would make you feel better there, Jean? Pardon? Does that make you feel better?
Yeah, yeah, this sounds more realistic. I'm saying that in sarcasm, for those who watch.
For those who watch. Everyone's famous in small town?
Seems like a little crazy for something they've heard.
It's part of the countryside. Or that's, everyone dies famous in small towns, that's learning.
How many days do we continue to, for ninety days, Travis?
Ninety days.
Or that name just till the end?
Oh, I don't know, until we get it fixed, I guess.
I think he asked a question this morning about the credit card being transferred.
Right.
We're still paying underneath the former name. Does that go on for sixty days or ninety days for all the...
I have to look, I have contact with banks, but what they will have to offer us anyway, because I think there's some discussion about me switching.
Where's the current credit card through? Okay.
It's still, still got the old name.
So, just out of curiosity, do you have to cancel that one and get a new one? That's, yeah, because usually that's... It's not that I do it on okay, regularly, so I'm not sure.
Depends how it's set up, too.
Yeah.
If it's a commercial account or something like that, then you could have listed.
I think we need to set this one aside.
Oh, okay.
The garbage can is sitting right here.
Welcome back. I'll just stop going to all those extra meetings.
Right, no problem with that. Free up a little bit more time.
Some of them might even went to two in one day.
Jeez.
A little ridiculous.
Who has the portfolio that would include the building?
Wayne is, I believe.
Wayne?
Yeah.
Okay. How are we coming along with Core Solutions?
There's the bill.
Or is that gonna be in your report?
His portfolio update?
Which was it, Jean?
Which one?
Go up there.
Ask Jim.
Yes, ask Jim.
For sure, fifteen thousand.
You're reading his report, that's what I was looking for, I forgot to write that down. Okay.
Basically, I'm just wondering where they are in their progression.
Physically, but not invoice wise, it shows not very far.
Not invoice, I'm wondering, yeah, physically where they're at. Not that it matters, but just...
It does.
Just wondering. Split rim, so Sacks and Beulah works on split rims apparently, huh? Pardon? No?
It's hazen, Beulah don't work on nothing.
Yeah, they haven't had a shop for a while.
Oh, got it, says hazen. I didn't even know they worked on those, it's hard to find anyone who will.
That's right.
Say if we got one from the Beulah's things, we'd have to definitely question that one.
Yeah, we have to wait a minute.
Okay.
Your semi still have split rims?
Pardon?
Tires on your semis are all split rims?
No, very seldom, no one.
That's all old school?
Yes.
I didn't know that, I had a friend that didn't use the cage.
Well, even our old...
It did a bit.
I'm trying to think of our old grain truck, I don't think that has split rims, but that's a sixty, about a sixty-eight. When I worked at the gas station, they had a cage where they put those together, they'd put them in the cage when they'd air them up.
I don't know how they got it over here, but they did.
Oops. Election bills, huh?
Unless he just got me to...
Am I missing something there?
If I know when he was in Engineering Three, unless he just got reclassified, because that was started in June.
Oh, okay.
I'll have to ask him about that, but... I was kinda surprised he was still on a three. He's been on RVP for a year now.
My neighbor was, just the other day, charging an air conditioning system, bringing it to pressure really slow, making sure other things pop.
I gotta make sure you have the right...
I was watching my dial, and I was, my other neighbor threw a firecracker.
Oh boy, that is almost worth a lawsuit.
He said I had to stop and count my fingers to see if everything was okay, really scared me.
There was a young, young person in the county had an incident with fireworks, just a couple days ago. Yeah. Was it good?
Pretty powerful, some of those. Poor Currie, such a cold person, but one would be excited.
I'm not on it. That's usually what I'm looking for.
Seven, twenty-seven, seven thirty-four, twenty-five, thirty-six, nine...
Our custodian, Dex's name again, Jim Elbert. I have a question for him, where are the... What's this one for?
Whole bunch of projects. You can redo some, minimize them in your head, and what are you doing there with them?
Hey, here we go. There.
I'll feed that fuel there.
I guess.
Or will it make the next?
Well, I'm sure something, don't worry.
All of my ventilator operating circuit.
This is where it must be working, it's a roadie firm, it's a lot of maintenance.
Yeah, yeah. I was just gonna say, so when we hit our fuel budget, do we just stop?
Say that's all you get?
To say we're gonna, we gotta be close.
But still fill us up?
No, I just recently got an update on where we're at on everything, but they did not bring it with me, they don't have the numbers. Stopped out there this week and checked all that. Get moving forthcoming. Crayons?
Babysitting class.
Babysitting class?
Class.
Strose relief?
It's how we sign the paychecks now. Standard Charolles blue.
Can tell that we read them from like...
Yep.
Just noticed that the shop is having quite a bit of maintenance, which is normal, but just wanna let you know that I appreciate when you send me those expense reports, it updates me where we're at compared to what's in places where they have. I just visited with them and got their record, but these bills are gonna change it.
Could be, yeah, I think so.
Either that, he's in the school district, so...
We haven't received any, totally different subject, but it's got to do with bills a little bit, any activity on our social services building, right? You might put it on the next agenda.
You see every, every county's supposed to put that on, so, yeah. Let's hope they get our money. You donate it and you bid on it.
And you get back.
I'm glad she went to the convention, that's good.
Might as well, um. Kind of with that county property, let's have some auction house discussion too, or are we on that?
All tied together, so.
Yeah.
They're reflecting our budget.
They even wrote it down here, Jim was gonna, was gonna ask him, but we can put it on the agenda to make it.
Selfless stuff there, wasn't it, minimum, wasn't it fifty or whatever?
You know, I just have my selfless bill.
I don't wanna beat up an old subject, but are we?
Suppose whatever it says later.
Yeah.
Have we done the store?
I don't think I can do much about it, so.
If we. Yeah, we had that, had a, we nuts finalized, so to speak. I think so.
The only question is, did the city ask us to reseed it? We never did that. So, do we do that once?
If we talk more, we're gonna get that property.
That's what it was asking.
Where are we on that?
Shortening.
We turn it, turn the lot back to the city?
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to.
Let's talk about it next meeting.
Yeah.
Refresh her, doesn't hurt. I really like them, you check all the papers.
I'm on it, Wayne.
Well, we haven't picked every piece up in the bills.
Maybe I'd update that one, she's got it on the agenda, I'm not sure what she's on for.
Yeah.
How many selfless does the show have?
Something this long.
She says, one, I was trying to figure out, how the one person's coming from.
I don't know. Gotta be more than one.
Right?
Oh, there's fourteen pages.
Oh, okay. That makes more sense.
Yeah.
And I'm like, this seems a bit different.
Yeah, my business is on the machine.
Over your life.
More eyes.
And like, it was like the sheriff's department, you know, how little broke out and stuff, and then I'm like, why is this one four hundred dollars?
I guess the white person.
I didn't make a phone call, but.
Right? Confused.
We talked to each other.
At a simpler life.
Yeah, right, basically.
We talked to each other.
Okay.
Three days less than last. But no, they didn't get their rights.
Yeah.
I know they did some.
Right, I'm like, oh, want something new today?
Whoa.
Last one, you're Gene.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Motion by Gene is our second.
A second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. We got Cindy up here. She's got a big list, but I think it'll be quick, hopefully.
I guess right on time, too.
Perfect timing.
Okay. So zoning case twenty-two oh six oh one is a resolution to amend the Mercer County zoning district map from ag to industrial. And it's, the first one is for Coteau number one, it's a tract of land located in the southwest quarter, the southwest quarter of section one. Township one forty-five, range eighty-eight of the fifth principal, Meridia Mercer County, North Dakota. And it is a parcel in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of section one. And it is, um, how many acres? Four point one three acres. And P and Z had recommended approval on June sixteenth, but they had wanted the condition to be, um, if the following parcel has not been approved upon within two years, it shall revert back to agricultural district. Now, I don't know how you guys feel about that. I do have it written up that way, and I do have it written up without it on there, so. Kevin Solley is here, if you have any questions on it.
Kevin, you can come up, I don't know if we'll have any questions, but, um.
Sure, um, yeah.
I was just gonna state while he's walking up here, I was at P and Z during this thing, and I don't know if we've ever put a timeline once we rezone from one district to the other. I think we've always made them come back.
No, no, we never have, not for zoning.
Not for zoning.
Yeah, so the.
Kevin, we just got a couple of calls this week, please, the public can't hear us unless you pull that mic up close to where you're talking.
All right, okay, yes. Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and Staff, Kevin Solley from Basin Electric.
Guess I've been here a few times before by now, um, kind of on different components of, of this project, um, at, at DGC. But this morning, we're, we're here for the four kind of changes in zoning, um, like Cindy mentioned, from ag to industrial for the parcels, where the CO2 injection wells would be located, and then also, um, we would need conditional use permits for those. So it'd be, um, industrial other, I think, is, is kind of how it fits into the, the Mercer County, County regs. And, um, I guess, yeah, it would certainly be our preference, um, to have, you know, kind of the least amount of extra conditions or anything on, on the permits as, as possible. Um, and I think there was some discussion at the planning and zoning meeting, I guess it was about three weeks ago, um, when, when, uh, some of you there. But, um, uh, kind of the, there's a lot of, I think I described it as a lot of moving parts. So, um, besides this, we have, um, or DGC has a permit application into the North Dakota Industrial Commission. And so the Industrial Commission is the entity that kind of regulates the underground, uh, permits and regulates the underground storage of CO2. And so that hearing is, um, coming up in, uh, just, again, a cou- a couple of weeks, that's on July twentieth in, in Bismarck. So that's a permit that's required. And so there's some time after the hearing before that permit, um, would be issued. Um, the second part is that there's something called the, um, uh, I have to look at it again, yeah, the, the M, MRV. It's a Monitoring, Reporting and Verification Plan, and so that's something that has been sent to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency in Washington, DC. So they're the entity that reviews that and, and would approve that. And so I guess the, our concern is if things drag out or, or take more time than we'd like, then we don't want these kind of other permits at the county level to time out on us or expire before everything, all the other kind of pieces and parts are in place. And so that's kind of how that came about at the, at the planning and zoning.
Cindy and Travis, I wasn't at that meeting. What was planning and zoning thoughts that they wanted the two-year deal under? Are there discussions?
Mike Esslinger had wanted that, and I honestly don't, I honestly don't understand why, why he wants it that way.
And, and some of the other questions that I brought up when we were at the planning and zoning was, um, since it's Coteau-owned land, I was asking if this would affect their bonding, which you said it wouldn't.
Right.
You know, if there was any bond release required, because some of this had been mined, some hasn't. Um, there's a parcel in the corner of, uh, section three that I know used to be a homestead, but I believe that was vacated.
That, that's correct, and I do, um, have a, a better map, if you wanna, should I put it up on the screen?
Sure.
Um, so that was another question that, that, uh, came up, I just printed it, uh, yesterday and it didn't show up. I guess, uh, Sarah Rath is here too, but yeah, this says a little bit better kind of coverage of, uh, land ownership. And so this small parcel here was in question at planning and zoning, and I printed this off of our, uh, GIS system yesterday, so, um, that is all in fact by, like, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, and I think there were other questions came up, uh, how poorly hand drawn, uh, you know, how, how close are we to, you know, maybe a bear's labor from the, the well sites, and it looks like, um, there's, uh, running, parts is above thirty-two hundred and seventy-five feet away, um, from the well site. Otherwise, it's surrounded by, um, Coteau, um, and, you know, pretty well, I'd say, um, buffered by, you know, the mining and, and all of the Coteau property.
Mm-hmm. And, um, North Dakota has primacy on, on regulating the CO2 wells, from my understanding.
That, that's, that's correct, yeah, and so that's, that's actually kind of an, an interesting point. Um, only North Dakota and Wyoming have kind of had the foresight to actually, um, apply for and get primacy to do this type of permitting. And so in any other, uh, state, you would be working with the, the EPA, um, so, yeah, North Dakota's doing well.
So I guess, kind of what Cindy alluded to, Cindy and I talked a little bit after the meeting, and I, I just don't understand why we would put a time limit on, on a zoning district. I mean, it's not something we've done in the past. Usually, once you've zoned something, it's that way until you come back and ask for a rezone. Um, conditional use permits are usually where we put a timeframe on.
Right, 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 yeah, and that, I think was, yeah, part of the discussion is in, in other jurisdictions we've worked in, and in fact, with the North Dakota PFC, PSC, we've had to go back, um, there's, you know, kind of a sunset clause on, on some of the, the permits. And so if we didn't start construction within four years, then we had to go back and, you know, kind of certify that everything was, was still the same. So, so, yeah, I think that's, that's right. For the zoning, the zoning is the zoning, but I think maybe the conditional use is the one that could possibly get a, a condition for the sunset clause.
Mr. Chairman, um, I think, uh, I, I pretty well definitely agree, uh, because there's various layers to this particular pit permit. Where it is probably this two years, more or less like when they come in and wanna set up a home, and two years later, nothing happened, you know? And that's probably what spurred two years into here, that's the only thing I can put together.
I, I wonder if what Mike had said was concerned with some of the other pieces like the, the, if any of those things were to fall through, what fallback would the county have? Now you're stuck with, uh, the zone being the way it is, it's, it is in zone industrial now, and the permit. So, sunset clause was to, that makes, at least makes it now, you know, was.
To get it back to agriculture then?
Was that they, the county had a recourse.
Okay.
And I don't know if we would really need a recourse on revert back to ag, um, especially in.
It's all in back Coteau anyway, right?
Yeah, it's all in, pretty well industrial, basically, yeah, there anyhow, so.
So, our options are, we would approve it as planning and zoning did it, or we would make the change to re, to remove the two-year period on the zoning district. And that would be the O-one case, the O-three case, the O-five, all the odd number ones, because they all had that, that two, two-year limit on them.
Do you wanna, do you wanna group these, or do you wanna do these individually?
They're all.
I think for the minute, well, it looks time consuming doing them individually, but.
They're all essentially the same thing, they use the same map, and it's just a, just a different description, so.
Well, for, for the record, I'm gonna, I happen to agree with planning and zoning. I'm the admin, probably be the odd man out here, but, uh, I see their logic that if indeed something would fall through on your other applications, that this is agricultural land and it should go back to agricultural land, and that's how I'm gonna vote on this.
Yeah, I, I guess just, um, uh, maybe a, a little bit more background. So these, these sites, um, the drilling of the wells has already been approved, so the, um, you know, the county commission issued the temporary use permit. So those well sites are there, um, and, and I guess the other thing here is, we, we would have an obligation to reclaim those well sites, to plug the wells and, and, um, kind of reclaim the area if, if, you know, things didn't, didn't proceed.
And at that point, can't we, we have the option as a commission to rezone it back to ag if we want?
Well, the owner would have to come in and request the.
And so Coteau would have to come back and ask for it.
Yeah, the county, the county doesn't dictate the zoning, it's the landowner that dictates it. So if the landowner didn't see a reason to rezone it back after reclamation, they wouldn't have to.
But they're going to want to anyway, because I'm gonna charge them more for industrial than ag.
There you go.
So, yeah, there's a hook. Cindy's got a hook in us.
They're all nodding back there.
That was gonna be my next question. Thank you, Cindy.
We don't need anyone to get it in writing, right?
Okay, is there any other questions, otherwise I have to entertain a motion.
Where's, uh, just out of curiosity, where's, uh, five, six, seven and eight?
The wells?
So the, each, um, each well has its own, um, acreage and zoning case. So the, uh, O-one is, um, well one, you know, it says the Coteau one, that would be in the southwest of one. O-three would be.
The one that's labeled three, right?
No, it would be the Coteau two, because it goes, uh, the zoning, and then it goes the conditional use.
Okay.
That's why the odd numbers are the zoning district ones, and the even numbers are the conditional uses.
Right.
They go, they pair it together.
Right, yeah.
But one's for.
One goes from.
Ones for conditional use, right?
Right, one goes from agriculture to industrial is number one, and the other one is the injection, the conditional use.
Conditional use, yep.
There you go.
What are the commission's wishes?
Well, I'd make a motion to approve as recommended by the, um, P and Z.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Gene, second by Marv, to approve the zoning district for twenty-two oh six oh one as presented by planning and zoning. Any discussion?
And now the planning and zoning one is the one that has the two year on it, correct?
Correct. Yeah, as presented, so. Any other discussion?
I guess the only thing I could reiterate is that I do understand Mike's logic, and Cindy gave us, gave me a piece of information that was very valuable, was a good idea, but I'm still gonna support the planning and zoning's deal on this.
Right, and, and I think really just, ultimately, you know, we're, we're hoping that this is all, uh, um, you know, kind of, everything's wrapped up, you know, kind of third or fourth quarter of this year, so hopefully everything is running by then, and then the time limit is kind of immaterial at that point. So it's, it's, the time limit is to, to get started.
Yeah.
Not, and so once we're started, then.
Then the time limit goes away and it stays until.
Then the time goes away and, and anyway, so, and if, if it did come up that something went wrong and, and we were two years behind, which I can't imagine, I guess we would just come back and, and kind of seek a.
An extension.
An extension, so that, that'll work.
Okay. Any other discussion?
That would work.
Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes, um, so, I don't think.
Because I don't, this is my first one, I just had follow all PSC and Industrial Commission regulations, because I don't, I don't know what to put.
Yeah.
Right.
That's where it falls, right. Yeah, you done well.
I'd say, I believe that's accurate.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve that?
I so move.
Motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion on the conditional use permit? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Now it's the O-six oh three, which would be the injection well number, Coteau number two.
Okay, so that is changing the, I'm in the Mercer County zoning district map from ag to industrial for parcel for Coteau number two, attractive land in the southwest quarter. The southwest quarter, Section Two, Township one forty-five eighty-eight. It's in the southwest, here, let me read over here. Okay, that is a three-point-oh-two acre parcel in the southwest quarter, the southwest quarter, Section Two, one forty-five eighty-eight. And it's a three-point-oh-two acre parcel.
Okay.
Planning and zoning's recommendation?
Was the same as the first one.
Chairman, board members, I move that we approve this twenty-two oh six oh three zoning per planning and zoning's recommendation.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Gene?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
And case twenty-two oh six oh four was the same, with the same condition, with the follow of the PSC and Industrial Commission regulations?
I move to accept twenty-two oh six oh four as presented.
Motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Gene?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Twenty-two oh six oh five is to amend the zoning district map from ag to industrial, and that is a three-point-one-nine acre parcel within the northwest quarter, the southeast quarter of Section Two, one forty-five eighty-eight, with that same two-year thing from the planning and zoning. This is for Coteau number three.
Commission's, commission's wishes?
Move to approve.
Motion by Gene, is there a second?
Second, I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Wayne, any discussion?
You said move to approve for planning and zoning's recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you, just wanted clarification.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
And twenty-two oh six oh six is for the conditional use for the injection well with that same condition for the follow all PSC and Industrial Commission regulations?
Move to approve as presented by P and Z.
Okay, motion by Gene, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
And twenty-two oh six oh seven is to amend the zoning district map from ag to industrial for a parcel in the northeast quarter, the southeast quarter, Section One, one forty-five eighty-eight, a three-point-one-eight acre parcel, and that is for Coteau number four, with that same two-year revert back thing from planning and zoning.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve twenty-two oh six oh seven per planning and zoning's recommendation.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
And twenty-two oh six oh eight is that conditional use for that same parcel with the same condition of the follow all PSC and Industrial Commission regulations?
Okay, commission's wishes?
I'll move to approve twenty-two oh six oh eight per planning and zoning.
Okay, motion by Liza, is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Second by Wayne, any discussion? Seeing none, Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Something different.
Okay, uh.
Thanks, Kevin.
Temporary use permit five ninety-two is a application for a scoria pit from Leroy Fisher, Fisher in Section twenty-nine, one forty-three eighty-nine. It's owned by Marty Reich, and it is with the condition of area disturbed under this temporary use permit must be reclaimed by the applicant, and must be approved and released by the county road superintendent. All road must be approved and released by county road superintendent, and the permit holder shall control weeds in acceptable manner during the time this permit is in effect.
Is this a new pit?
Yep.
Tell me about where that's located.
And actually, there's one condition on here that Ken has brought up to my attention, and I, this condition's always been on all of these, and he is wondering why we ever had that first condition on here ever, like, what does he have to do with approving and releasing anything on private land? And that's always just been on there, so I've always just put it back on there.
Which condition?
That first one where it says, area disturbed under this temporary use permit must be reclaimed by the applicant and must be approved and released by the county road superintendent. He said, what does he have to do with somebody's private land?
Well, it's still ag land, it's changed to a pit, so it needs to be put back to ag land, wouldn't that be what he has to do?
Well, it's on private land, like he said, what does he have to do with it?
But you're, you're changing conditional use, though, it's not, it's, it's, it's agr, I mean, it's agriculture that's underneath the conditional use of, of mining. And what is, his purpose, well, his purpose probably is to make sure that the mine area did get done properly, and if it didn't, we have an issue, and the issue would be, it either comes back to you, Cindy, or the issue will go to legal counsel, so that this land was, this is how it was when it was set up, and that's how it's gonna be when, when they pull out.
And we want that under the road superintendent, or do we want that under the land use for people?
Well, she's only got, she's not an expert in, in that area neither, you know, so I think that's why it got thrown under the road, because they, they do, they did dirt work, they should know how to reclaim, and slopes and these types of things, if that's an issue, they're more familiar with it than, than, than Cindy would be.
And about like road approaches and all that, too, right?
Well, right.
Is there a potential that they're gonna be hauling this?
Exactly.
On the roads?
Exactly, so he's gotta be out there maintaining the condition of the road, or, or erosion, or those types of things anyhow. And I, I think that's just where it ought to stay personally, but, because they're, they're familiar with it, and, and, true, I hear what you're saying, it's private land, but there is a conditional use, and that changes, and it, it goes to mining. It's not, it's not farmed no more, it's going, went, flipped into the mining process. And they, and that mining drops under NSHA regulations then also, so it's a little more complex than.
Than just a.
Yeah.
It was just brought to my attention, I said, I have no idea.
But as far as Marv's question on location, this would be basically south of Zapoff of County Thirteen, probably a little bit to the east.
I know about where it's at.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably right beyond that curve, that used to be east, there was a pit at one time, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, for discussion, I move to approve permit five ninety-two as presented by planning and zoning.
Okay, motion by Marv to approve five ninety-two as presented, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Gene, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Okay, and five, temporary use permit five ninety-three is an application from Bechtold Paving for a temporary asphalt plant. It's in Section fourteen, one forty-four eighty-eight. It's, the restrictions are work during daylight hours, and, and the same conditions that were just under the, under the last one, but, oh, oh, that does control, oh, wait, there's two more. It also has on here contact county road superintendent and does control in pit area. I don't know why those are added on there.
This was the same location where the stuff for the mill, Mill and Overlay last year was done?
Yep.
Yeah, up by.
Where, where is that?
Yeah, just like a half mile west of the roundabout.
Yeah, right by the roundabout up there.
Yeah, same, same area.
Same spot, same spot that was disturbed. Okay, commission's wishes?
Move to approve.
Motion by Gene to move to approve as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Marv, any discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Anything else, Cindy?
Nope.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Cindy.
We do.
Yeah, we all get to say that one.
What happens, what happens if my pen dies?
Dan's not using his. All right, next up, we got Candy for the landfill.
And as we just here to get approval device on scoria.
Okay.
And what it's gonna end up being, it's gonna come from Randy Byram, and I'm wanting to get eight side dump loads, and they are a hundred and forty dollars per load. I know, there's twenty-eight yards on a side dump, and there's fourteen dollars a yard, so eight loads would be three thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. And this trucking is a hundred and forty an hour, and they figured they could probably get two loads an hour, so that comes to five sixty, so a rough estimate on this is three thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars for a two-inch scoria delivered to the landfill.
You said eight loads?
Huh?
Did you say eight loads?
Yes, eight loads.
My pen is slow.
And it'll be like two hundred and twenty-four yards total.
So Candy, that, so that be size scoria?
Yes, it'll be two-inch scoria.
We can't get some two-inch and some bit run?
Well, I don't like to have the big stuff in there, because it'll take out oil pounds and.
Okay, you wanna, you wanna pass that on to your road division, because for some reason, we don't get size scoria to drive on, we get these to drive on. I like your idea.
Well, yeah, I got that, I mean.
I don't think Candy gets to do that.
You can't have big rocks in there, people are gonna.
Yeah, it's not, not appropriate.
And we take oil pounds off, we're gonna be in big trouble.
Okay, just, just trying to save you a buck, you know?
Yeah, I know.
What are the commission's wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept Candy's trans recommendations for scoria.
Okay, motion by Marv to accept Candy's recommendation for purchase of scoria, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any other discussion?
What's the primary use for the scoria?
Just on the road.
Okay.
Yeah, I know her.
And I use it really sparsely, because I'm cheap.
She puts, what she does is she puts the big chunks on, and then she covers it with the little stuff, so she, she, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Oh, I lost my transfer, who motioned?
Marv did.
Marv did, Marv?
Aye.
Me.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
And just for information, we finally did get approval from the state to dump garbage in the new pits, and we started dumping in there on six twenty-nine twenty-two to try and get the liner covered. And then the other stuff, I'll discuss when we do the budget stuff. That's all, have a good day, thanks.
Thank you, Candy.
All right, Charlie, it's like you're the guy.
Look at us, we're back on time now.
Back on time. Thanks to Candy.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Did you give Ken the day off?
Pull the, pull the mic over.
Sorry, how's that? Better?
Yes.
Too loud, too loud?
No, no.
No.
Okay. I noticed that the state attorney's not here today, Todd, Todd, right?
Yeah.
He's supposed to be coming, but.
We don't know when.
Okay, um, because the, the bids that we received, I know we had a question on the bond for Bechtold, the apparent low bidder, which, check the math, everything looks great there, you know, they're fine with that. They did provide a bid bond, they did provide the contractor's license, so everything, and also acknowledged the addendum that was issued as part of the bid. So, everything was legal and kosher with what they submitted. Their bond is a standardized AIA document, so I'm a little, I guess I, I'm, I'm still not certain what necessarily the hangup is there. His comment was that there was, it was missing provisions for, uh, uh, claims on the contractor, I presume, should it be necessary. Typically, that's covered under your performance bond, which is for the full amount of the work that is handled, which is handled also generated, signed, and executed by the contractor at the time of contract, which we would, is the next step we take, you know, so I don't see personally an issue with moving forward and awarding this way it is today, but I'm certainly not an attorney, and I don't, I don't wanna overstep Todd on this, so I, I, I guess that's my, my general thought on it. We can put it back in the contractor's court to say, you know, our attorney is concerned, or notice that this is what's missing, and then I let them handle it out, I'm sure they probably get their attorney involved too, and.
Can we table it till later in the meeting, and then ask Todd when he comes in?
Yeah, I was gonna say unless anybody else has talked to Todd on his concerns.
Not unless, not unless.
And just so you're aware too, so we opened this on the fifteenth, right, yeah, the fifteenth of June, so we've, we, we're allowed to hold the bids for sixty days. I mean, contractors do that, they'd rather know if they have it, but we're, we are, you know, legally allowed to do that if it, things need to get ironed out more, but.
If Todd had some concerns, I'd like to hear his concerns, and if he said he'd show up la, later, I'm gonna ask the chairman if we can just table it, hopefully he'll show up, and then we can ask him.
Yeah, the only other, the only other concern he had too was with the next, there were two bids received, so then Northern, he had made the statement that they did not submit a contractor's license, which they, they did. They did include that, so I don't know, he must have missed that, maybe, or, I'm not sure, but my understanding with bid bonds, you know, there, there's a surety bond issued to a contractor and five percent of the amount of the bid, and that's literally its purpose, so if they were selected, and for, whether either they failed or refused to perform the work or enter into a contract, then the owner, in this case, the county, would keep five percent of the bid, so if you had a million dollar contract, you would get to keep fifty thousand dollars, and that's that. That's the purpose of the bid bond. Where we get into performance claims on contractors and their work-related items, that's the performance payment bond that comes with part of the contract, so maybe that's what he's asking for, but I don't, I don't know.
Do you know if he's been supplied like our standard contract language as far as?
The.
Like when we award the bid and.
Todd?
Yeah, Todd.
I, I don't think so.
Okay.
Not by me, anyway.
Not by you?
Yeah. And maybe, you know, maybe that's something that he just needs, him and I just need to chat about, or I, I don't know.
I'd say at this time, let's just delay it until later in the meeting, and if Todd doesn't show up, then we'll do a, a table to the next meeting. Okay. Any, anything else, Charlie?
So the next.
You're just looking at your.
I just, yeah, I apologize, so the twentieth would be the next meeting if that were to happen, which, yeah, I, at that point, we're, you know, thirty-five days past bid opening, so we're still fine, so. At that point, we're, you know, thirty-five days past bid opening, so we're still fine, so.
I got a question, if I can ask it, uh, has anything been looked at with the rumble strip on county twenty-seven about six miles north of Hazen? It'd be four.
On twenty-seven?
Yeah, I'm trying to do the math here real quick, be four, five, six. Probably about seven miles north, I forget the east-west county road. But it's, uh, just where, east of Jerome Miller's, up by Kevin Way's.
Is it a, is it a fog line strip?
Right on twenty-seven, there's a, it's been there for years, you go across it, you, it's a rough.
Okay.
It's, I call it a rumble strip.
Is it, that's, is it a, is it a rumble strip, is it a fog line rumble strip, a center line rumble strip, or is it?
No, it, uh, the, it's like the, um, the road bed itself, um.
It's right in the road bed, right?
Oh, it's in the driving, it's in actual driving lane?
It's right in the driving, yeah, it's all across the road, and when you cross it with vehicles, it's. It's pretty rough.
Yeah, so.
Is that the Hazen Bay Road going north of?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it, it's at the intersection of ETL six and Hazen Bay Road?
No, way south.
It's south of, you said seven miles, that's gotta be at least four or five miles south of that intersection there.
Yeah, so it's.
Is it kinda by that slough area?
Uh, just north of the.
Yeah.
Of the slough.
Okay, yep, I know where you're at.
About, it's a mile and, and then a hundred yards.
Okay.
Right, right on the road, it's been there forever. And it's, um.
I, I guess, uh, it hasn't been brought to my attention, I, and I haven't, um. To be honest with you, I don't know if I've even driven over that, if I'm being totally honest with you.
I'm not even certain, I think at one time, there was a sign there indicating, uh, something about, there may have been, I'm not positive. But, uh, yeah, it's, um. It's, it's pretty rough.
Okay.
Uh, with our new fa- with our new vehicles nowadays, if you're just in a, a regular vehicle, you don't hardly notice it. Campers, wow, it really gives them a ride. And ironically, even with farm equipment, I have to slow down with the tractor. Cause it, the way it is, it's, it's timed just perfect, I gotta go really slow down.
It's like bumpy.
I can't go across, I gotta slow down about ten miles an hour with the, with the tractor, but I'm just curious if.
Okay.
There's ever been anything looked into.
Yeah.
Yeah, that.
That means you have to shift.
Yeah.
Get off the throttle.
No, but I can, I can look into that for you too Jean, I don't, that hasn't been brought to my attention, I don't, uh.
In the winter too.
Know anything about it till today.
Okay.
And I, I know that, that, that's, that section of road, you know, is being looked at for an overlay and.
I, I'm sorry, I should've known what the east-west road is, that's there, I, it's.
Okay.
Not twenty-six, because I think twenty's. Twenty-six turns further south.
Further south, way further south, yes.
Well, it's, the dump ground road is twenty-six, and you go a mile north and then it's, I think it turns and goes east again.
Goes east over to Ben, yeah.
Yep, but it's two miles north of that. And I don't know that county road number, I should know it, but I don't.
Well, I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
It's not, I'll probably look at it on the way home. On the way back to Beela, so.
Okay, that's.
Probably needs a leveling course or something, I don't know.
Could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, which it, yeah. Which it would receive even if we were to do an overlay, but maybe as a temporary Band-Aid fix, we would level, put a level course on it.
Patch job right there, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Charlie?
Doing good. Oh, 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 oh.
Oh, speak of the devil.
Morning sir. Did you see, seen the little horns?
We were just discussing the, uh, county road twenty-six mill and overlay bid, you had a couple of questions on the, on, uh, Bechtold, you said, Charlie?
Yeah, for Bechtold, it was provisions for claims. I do, well, I have the, the bidder's proposal. And then I have the, uh. The actual bid bond. Bid bond that was provided, oops, sorry. Well, here, let me, I don't wanna put improper words in your mouth.
Especially, especially an attorney's mouth.
It's kinda like most of the words I put in my mouth, sometimes it's not good. I have dysentery in my mouth and constipation in the brain from time to time. It's a common affliction though.
Okay, so, Bechtold does not include the provisions for claims on the bond, should it become necessary?
Well, if it doesn't have provisions for claims, that means it doesn't do a doggone thing for us. I think.
Well, I guess no.
And I think this is something that's coming from the bonding company and not Bechtold, I think we should give them an opportunity to fix it, if they can't fix it. Then they're out of consideration.
Well, weren't you saying, Charlie, that that comes later, when they do that?
Well, that's my question, I guess, for you Todd, so the bid bond, the purpose of the bid bond, my knowledge and understanding of it is. In the AIA documentation, standardized documentation, it's used this very frequently in the industry. But the, the, my understanding of the bid bond is, it's, its sole purpose is for five percent of the bid amount. And should the contractor be awarded the, the project, but either, you know, fail or refuse to perform the work, then the owner keeps five, that five percent. So if you got a million dollar project, the owner keeps fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
And that's the purpose of it, so after you en- execute a contract and enter into an agreement, a performance, uh, performance payment bond is then created. Which would then maybe spell out those terms that you're concerned with.
But, from what I just understood, maybe I misunderstood you.
Okay.
And I'll be honest with everyone present, it's been one of those mornings from hell, I was expecting to see a guy with big horns meet me at the door today.
Sorry.
I won't go into defense.
Okay.
Uh, but, if I'm misunderstanding you, please correct me, that this doesn't provide any provisions to collect. So let's say this contractor's awarded the bid, they can't get to it this year. Can we now collect the five percent?
Correct.
Okay, if that's in there, then it's good.
Yep.
Because when I reviewed these, I, I didn't see that.
Well.
But what you're looking at is on the performance bond.
Correct.
Right, and the performance bond is a separate bond. Uh, there's no way that any normal bonding company is usually going to say, okay, we're gonna give you a bid. And this bond is going to cover the bidding process as well as completion. There are a few companies that are doing that, but it's not as common as you would think. Back in the olden days, you got one bond, covered the bid bond, cover everything, they're pulling away from that.
Okay.
I can say tongue in cheek names, because that way they can collect due premiums instead of.
It's called, it's called good marketing.
Supported by any permissible solid evidence.
Okay. Okay, based on what we've heard, are we, um, do we wish to go forward with, uh, accepting the bids?
And it was Bechtold paving, and their bid amount, I guess I can remind the commission.
Yes.
Was nine eight, nine hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-five cents.
Say that number again.
Pardon?
Say that number again, please.
Yep, it is nine eight zero, eight five six, and fifty-five cents. And I did check the numbers on those as well, those are all good.
Okay.
Bechtold, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the bid from Bechtold for nine hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-five cents.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Eliza, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes.
So the, the next steps in this process, then we'll, we'll work to execute a contract, we'll issue the notice of award. And since we accepted today, within ten days, we gotta get them that notice of award and the contract documents for them to execute on their end and provide that information to us. Back, so.
Okay.
So I'll be in touch with you guys on paperwork that needs signed, and move from there.
Alright.
Okay. Anything else for Charlie?
No.
I'll check that road out on the way home.
Thank you.
Alright, Marv, you had a mill levy question?
Yeah. Fellow commissioners and Mr. Schors, uh, Todd, I emailed Todd some questions regarding mill levies. And he's doing some work on it, and for his information, uh, he's been working with Nadako. And I emailed him back saying I would be in Bismarck, do you mind if I stop, stop at the tax commissioner's office? Which I did, and you'll see that on the second page which I gave you. Now, this is information only, not to take any action at this time. The reason I'm bringing this up is, once we receive an answer to these questions. We may or may not have to put something in the paper to inform the public. What is going on and why we need to put something on the ballot. So that they're more educated when the time comes. This has to be, if indeed, we have to do something, it may have to be approved by the public in a general election. And so, that's all I'm doing is bring it to your attention that Todd's working on it. And he has as much information as I have, and I just keep passing everything to him, and, uh, we'll get an answer forthcoming.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, um. Trying to think timing wise here. Should we do board appointments?
We have time, no.
So, annual board appointments, I believe, are done in July?
Those are in our packet. Whole bunch of them.
I don't even know if I have them all. Couple of calls.
Pardon?
Um, we can do them in the order that's listed here, weed board.
And how many do we need for weed board?
Be, uh, Gary Gerkey and, uh, Schlender.
How many positions?
I think there's two, right?
Is there two openings?
Okay, which, which one are we starting with?
We have two.
You got two, you got Scott, Scott, uh, Schlender and Gary Gerkey for the weed board.
Weed board?
Weed board, yeah.
Weed board, yep. It was just given today. It might be in your pile, so.
It was a time, yeah.
Got me all confused. There it is.
Water?
Alright, so, we had two openings and two applicants?
Yep. Or two terms were done, yeah.
Okay, and they're three-year terms, or?
I think so, right?
I believe they're three-year terms.
Three-year terms for the weed board? Okay.
And we have two spots open, correct?
Two spots, two applicants. Gary Gerkey and Scott.
Schlender? Schlender, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if it's alright with you, I'll make a motion to appoint Scott, Scott Schlender and Gary Gerkey back onto the weed board, Mercer County weed board.
Okay, motion by Wayne, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Eliza, any discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
And, and it's really, uh, Scott is replacing his dad, which was Melvin Schlender. So, there you go.
So now we have library?
Library?
Library.
And how many openings do we have on that?
I believe it's two.
Two.
Um, Alice, we had just, um, approved like a month or two ago. And she was doing it on expired, so now she's asking for the full term, and Joel Newmiller, um, is already currently on there and then asking for, to be put back on for another term.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I move to approve Joel Newmiller and Alice Hucle to the library board.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Eliza, any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, planning and zoning?
And how many spots do we have on that?
Two.
Two?
And we got two applicants? These, we don't even have to make.
Tough decisions here.
They make it hard, don't they?
Yeah.
I got, you probably lose more members than you get.
Yeah.
Two for planning and zoning, right?
Two for planning and zoning, we got, um.
How do you, what's this last name?
William and Frank.
William?
Marini.
Marini?
Oh, Marini.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Frank Bitterman. Okay. What are the commission's wishes?
I move to accept. I move to accept, uh, Frank Bitterman and William Marlini.
Okay, motion by Jean, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Marv, any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, Jean?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
Nay.
Eliza?
Nay.
I'm gonna vote nay as well, let's look at these individually. Um, any concern with Marini?
Oh, if you want, I'll make the motion to appoint Bill Marini to the planning and zoning.
Okay, motion by Wayne, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Eliza, any discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Is there any other, uh, motion for planning and zoning, board appointees? Any other? Seeing none, we'll move on. Um, policy committee? We got one applicant. Mr. Jean?
We got two.
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 We got Jean and Pam Hale.
And how many spots do we got?
How many spots?
How many?
How many spots do we got?
For which one?
Policy?
Three.
Three? Okay.
I'll move to approve Jean Wolf and Pam Hale for, um, policy committee.
Okay, motion by Eliza, is there a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Wayne, any discussion? Seeing none, Eliza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. So we still have one opening on the policy committee and one opening on the planning and zoning.
We have one more interest, we just haven't received our application.
For policy, or, okay.
Okay.
We have one more interest, we just haven't received our application yet.
Okay.
Okay, since we're talking about, um, board appointments, it was brought to my attention that, um, the library board, I believe, is the only board that we don't, um, pay, uh, for meetings. Um, McLean County does pay their library board, um, members, but Mercer County doesn't, so, uh, McLean County pays them forty-five dollars a meeting. So I don't know if that was something that we wanted to consider, um, we can, since it's the first time we brought it up, um, it's definitely something we would put in the budget. If we don't wanna take any action today, we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting, but I just, they, they had voiced that concern and. I thought I'd bring it in front of the commission to, to consider.
Mr. Chairman, I think I'd like to bring it up during our budget process.
And I think that's the appropriate time to do that.
Budget process, okay, when we talk about budget, we'll put, uh, uh, library board compensation for Mercer County. Alright, um. Mileage reimbursement?
Okay.
Uh, I'm sure most of you are aware that the IRS came with a mid-season or mid-year, um, mileage reimbursement, um, increase. And then this policy, that came from the state, I believe?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so the state's looking effective, uh, July one to go from fifty-eight and a half to sixty-two and a half, um, for. Travel, personal use vehicle, and then there's a different rate for charter lease or rental of aircraft. So. So, what would the commission like to do?
For discussion, I move to approve policy five oh seven, five eleven, five nineteen, mileage reimbursement.
Okay. Motion by Marv to approve as presented. Is there a second?
There's gonna be issue.
Yeah.
We can't go to half.
We can't go to half cent.
Unfortunately, we can't do half cent. We have to round, usually round. That was my only.
No, withdraw my motion then. You guys want to know or?
We can amend it.
Easier to withdraw or amend it?
Well, we didn't have a second.
We didn't have a second.
We didn't have a second, so he could withdraw before there was a second.
So what is the issue?
Our computer don't go to half cent.
Yeah. Like right now, we do fifty-nine cents.
We rounded it up.
We rounded it up.
The computer will not allow you to put half cent in.
Half cent in there.
So we'd have to make it sixty-two or sixty-three?
Right.
We've always rounded up?
Yep.
So is there a motion to adopt this with the roundup to sixty-three cents?
Okay, make a motion to Wayne. To approve policy five oh seven for vehicles increased to fifty-nine cents or fifty-nine to sixty-three. Policy five eleven from fifty-nine to sixty-three. And five nineteen from the eighty-seven seventy-five to ninety-four.
Okay.
Cents per mile.
Motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza. Any discussion?
Yes, I'm curious on five nineteen, why it went up twenty-five cents? We were able to do ninety-three point seven five.
Is it decimal cents or is that dollars? It's decimal cents. That's why he went to ninety-four.
Decimal cents, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Ninety-four cents.
Yeah, ninety-four cents. Any other discussion?
One more question. Is there a sunset on this, or is it until the end of the year, or?
Till the IRS changes it again.
Yeah.
Or the state.
It's just until.
Which more than like.
Usually what the feds goes to the state and then it comes to us.
This is why I printed from the states.
Yeah.
Agreed.
It'll probably change January 1.
I would think so.
And then again, it might not. The last change actually went down, did it not? I think so.
Yep, yep.
So it's effective until IRS gives us another ruling?
Correct. This is basically following the IRS's, I don't know if you call it recommendation or.
calculation.
It is what they approve for other government employees, I think. I could be corrected on that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. All right. Right on the nose. All right, I think we can bring Aaron up here from Custer District Health. We'll give you an extra thirty seconds.
Perfect. I need all the time I can get today. Do you have additional documents, our annual reports that'll pass out?
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was dry this morning. No wind or nothing, no? Unusual.
No ice or snow.
No ice or snow. Rain or sleet?
Rain or sleet, yeah.
Okay, good morning. Thank you for having me. I just passed out, the first page is an agenda for the joint board of county commissioners meeting, which again is the all county commissioners from all five of our counties to attend in a overall approval of the mill levy request. And then I also have a annual report, two versions of our annual report in the packet.
What's your requirement for quorum? I see you got that marked on there.
A quorum of all commissioners from each county and then a quorum of counties. If that makes sense.
So you'd see two for, so you need three counties and then you need at least?
I need three from your county if you guys attend, two from three of the other counties, because they only have three commissioners. And then Morton County has five commissioners. It's a difficult meeting to gather people at. We always have, I always have to call people last minute, so it's kind of a struggle, but. Again, Aaron Arata, the administrator at Custer Health in Mandan. I'm here today with my 2023 budget and my equalized levy request from all five of the counties that we serve. We are the public health unit stationed out of Mandan. We also have an office in Mercer and Grant Counties. And we provide public health services to Grant, Mercer, Morton, Oliver, and Sioux Counties. The mill levy request I kept equal from last year, just a little bit lower, three point three four, which for Mercer County would be a dollar amount of approximately one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. That is a decrease from last year. I tried to make sure that I was not increasing my requests from the counties. Kept everything level. And the reason I was able to do that is all of our funding sources have stayed level for next year, with the exception of one federal pass-through grant that we get through the state health department to fund our women's way program. That is seeing a decrease. It's not reflected on the budget. There's additional money in the women's way program, but that's for a marketing contract that we have with the state. The actual programming itself will have less funding next year. We do still have significant COVID funding that's reflected in the proposed collections for 2023. All of that funding is set to expire at the end of June in 2023. I'm not sure if we will be getting any more. I do not anticipate spending all of that money because of the restrictions. I'm only allowed to do certain things with the money. It's kind of hard to spend. I'm sure you guys are witnessing the same things with your money. But it is there for you to see. I just am not sure how much we will actually be able to spend. There may be extensions, but that I also don't know at this point. The annual report I passed out, the little blue booklet. On the second page, I thought it would be nice to have a breakdown of our different funding sources for your information. We have four major categories. We receive state grants, federal grants, county dollars, and then local non-levy dollars, which would be from private foundations and fees. And so the breakdown, most of our funding is federal funding. Almost all of that comes through the state health department and is dispersed to us. And then the counties contribute the next highest funding source, which is twenty-six percent of our funding. I thought that would be interesting for you guys to see. Then I reminded you of the joint board meeting. Then I also did want to make one note that Custer Health is going to be in the process of changing our name to better reflect who we are, who we serve, and what we do. All of the other health units in the state have a location. And then the word health department or health district or public health in it, Custer Health kind of doesn't really describe what we are. We have federal funding to fully fund that process. There will be no county dollars spent on that project. We will be seeking public input, and so you guys would be hear word of it. And I didn't want you to have any concerns about your county dollars going towards that. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Like I said, everything's pretty much staying the same. And so if there are any questions, I can answer those.
Any ideas on what the new name would be?
Not yet. We did the board met last week and did choose a marketing firm to go with. And so we will be working on that process. I'm hoping to have it all wrapped up by the end of the year, with the exception of the few odds and ends that go with that. I know it's not an easy process to undertake, but I think it'll be very worthwhile.
Are, excuse me, are you able to keep enough personnel around in order to fund these programs that you have? Or has it been somewhat a struggle for you folks too, or?
We've had some turnover. So from the 2022 budget to the 2023 budget, I think there were two employees that had resigned in the meantime. So that's not terrible, but we only have thirty employees. So that is, it's not easy. Nurses, because we mostly employ nurses, or we don't want to lose them because when you do, they're very hard to hire at the salary we can pay. I found that with our, we had an environmental health practitioner resign as well. That requires a science degree, and it's also hard to hire individuals with a science degree for the salary we can offer. So that's going to continue to be a challenge for us. And not sure how to address it, but it's not a unique challenge to my unit.
It's fortunate, no retirements coming about, right?
We did all of those right before the pandemic.
She's good, yeah.
My next retirement, I think, is four years. And I'm not looking forward to that, but we manage.
Okay.
Wayne's looking for another job.
There you go.
I didn't quite have that degree, though.
Any other questions for Aaron? Well, we thank you for coming and.
Thank you.
Try to get at least three of us there at that meeting. Looks like it's a Tuesday at ten.
If not, I'll be calling. Thank you so much for your time today. Have a good rest of your day.
Thanks for your presentation.
Yes.
All right. Should we go to the Beulah Lions Club RFP permit?
The Beulah Lions Club is submitting an application for a fifty-fifty raffle during the Dakota Yon and Classic, seven twenty-two to seven twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. A motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza. Any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Pardon? Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. Beulah Little People?
Beulah Little People, preschool also submitted a fifty-fifty raffle for Dakota Yon and Classic on July 21 at Beulah Bay.
Okay. Commission's wishes?
A move to approve.
Motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza. Any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. The county special improvement districts, I put that on there. Just an informational piece at this point. I have been approached by a couple rural subdivisions in the county that possibly would like to change from gravel to asphalt in their subdivisions. I did talk to Aaron Burst at the Association of Counties. It is something that the county could do. I'm used to doing it in municipal government, the city governments. Essentially, what would be done is that they would go out for bids. They would create an improvement district, which would be essentially the subdivision. Then that subdivision would have the right to review it and then protest it if they didn't want it. If they went through with it, then we would create an assessment committee, which on the county level could be the county commission. And then depending on how that would be done, we could go out for bonds or other type of funding sources to help them. And essentially then we would assess it to the individual subdivisions on a per lot basis. I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, that it might be something that people in the county might ask us for in the future. We could go through more of the steps as we get to that. But essentially, the county would be the medium like the city normally would do. And you could do special improvement districts. If if we did do that, kind of similar to like how special improvement districts work in the city, if people didn't pay their taxes, the property would come back to the county. Residents within that subdivision will be able to pay those specials before they actually hit the tax roll, so they could avoid interest. I just wanted to bring it up for, that it's something that's been requested. If somebody proceeds it further, then we could go into more discussion on how it would actually work. But typically, these subdivisions are closer to the lake. They're second or third homes for most people. And I think the risk to the county would be pretty minimal that those people would allow those to come back in Texas, so.
So I take it the roads, some of the roads that they're asking are county roads? That's why, because otherwise, if it's on private property, they can pave it themselves. Not, they don't need our permission.
They don't need our permission, but if they couldn't get a funding source together individually, it would be a second option. We wouldn't take over, the HOAs would still do the maintenance and own the roads. We would just be the entity that would allow them to get a bonding ability. And they could pay it over the course of twenty years.
Okay.
Wayne, did you have a question?
Well, just had a comment. Several years back, a subdivision, and I don't know the year, but there was kind of a procedural process that the county had to go through. And so maybe we want to go back and research that. But I wish I knew the year. But I know a subdivision had kind of done the same thing, but there's a way that the county had to go about it. And I don't know if it's like the way the city runs it or not, but there must be a procedure for.
It's very similar and.
Very similar.
Yeah, because we would be treated as a political subdivision, which is city, a county, a township if they're organized, or can consider political subdivisions. So the law allows you to do these. And I just, there's nothing that's come forward at this point. It's just been discussion. People have asked me questions about it.
And it's only happened kind of once in the years I've been here. So it hasn't happened in a long, long time, so.
Right. And I mean, there was just a couple subdivisions that I've, that have approached me and asked me about it. And I did a little research on it, just to find out if we could do it. Like Wayne said, we've done it in the past, but it's very uncommon. But it could be something that comes up in the future, so.
We'd have to, yep, study and research how that procedure went.
Yeah, so. I thought I'd bring it up just so that we didn't get caught out of the blue if somebody did come forward, so. RFP on the twenty-three audit?
I brought that up, board members. I just want to bring it to you guys' attention that 2021, 2022 audit is required. And what I would suggest is that we send out an RFP sooner than later. Not to start until January, but it gets them on their list. If we wait until March, we're farther down their calendar and it just takes much longer to receive the audit. If we get on their calendar early, there's a possibility you'd have that information for your 2023 budget, which is very, very helpful. So I just guys, I want you guys to consider that. There's nothing, it doesn't cost us anything to send out an RFP to begin January 30th, 2023, for the year 21, 22. We just get on their calendar much sooner than later. So I want you guys to consider that, and we'll probably bring it up at another meeting after you've given it some thought. You can bring it up at the first budget meeting even. We have plenty of time. You can bring it up at the first budget meeting even. We have plenty of time. There's no, no pressure, this information.
Okay. All right, Todd's here. Do we want to talk treasure resignation or do we have to wait longer for that?
They asked we wait until.
Till, they're at a funeral?
Yeah.
They had no idea, when did that funeral start?
They thought they'd be here by eleven thirty.
Okay, okay. We'll hold off on that. Should we do portfolio updates?
Some of those. We might want to take a break before eleven o'clock gets here, too.
We could do that. Let's. Yeah, let's do a few updates and then we'll take like a ten minute break before the eleven o'clock, so. Uh, Jean, I'll start with you.
Mine's always short and still is short. I haven't been to Mercer County Economic Development Meeting. They had one and it was at noon, I think, uh, on the trying to look here, on June, it was like the twenty-second or fif, whatever. We had a meeting here, though, so I couldn't make it. Missouri River Advisory, they got, they got a meeting called the Missouri River Stakeholders Meeting, August tenth. Policy Committee, we have nothing. I talked to a clerk at court, everything's going good. State's attorney, I have no complaints from that office. I visited with them this morning and nothing on the sheriff's office.
Okay, Marv?
Okay, mine's very brief. I'm going to try to beat Jean. I had three meetings this last week. Custer Health Meeting down in Mandan, they did a very good job. They presented their budget, which you guys saw copies of today, and other business topics that we discussed. Also had a meeting with the Road Department to review his budget recommendations and see where we're at, up to, at this time on remaining costs. Then I also visited with Charlie at Interstate Engineering and we're preparing some information on project costs that we expect in, for the next two to three years. And I'll get those to you and we should have them by, hopefully by their first or second budget meeting.
Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Fair is next week. Mercer County Fair's in Beulah, starts the fourteenth, Thursday the fourteenth, goes through Sunday, seventeenth. Setup, they've already kind of started doing setup, but their main setup night is next Tuesday starting at five-thirty. Expecting similar turnout for livestock as they did last year, maybe even a little bit more, which was probably the best we've had in fifteen or twenty years. Library Board, we met last Monday. We approved our preliminary budget, which Beth was going to submit to the Auditor's Office. I don't know if you received that yet or not, but that should be coming. Water Resource Board, if you looked at my mileage report, we met like four times in June. They did approve a drain tile project or a portion of the project out by Dakota Waters, Beulah Bay area. Hoping to start that yet this summer and maybe finish it later this fall. That's the situation. If we would have done it at a different order, maybe a special improvement district would have worked for something like that, too. But that's kind of where some of those discussions got spurred.
Sure.
And let's see, Library, Water Resource Board, Fair Board. I think that's the updates I have. Liza?
Uh, we met for the ambulance board and we finalized the budget. I don't know if you got that yet or not. You got it, so, okay. One of the biggest things that we were looking at that budget is, was interesting in that I believe it was Medicaid is doing a lot of write-offs that they hadn't been doing in the past year, so that's something that we're looking into to see what's going on there. Talked a lot about the new ambulance that we don't know when it's going to get here yet and how long, as they affectionately call her Big Bertha, is going to hold out. So we're trying to make plans for what we're going to do if Big Bertha continues to cost too much money and what we need to do instead. Candy was in here and gave an update on the, that we can finally start putting garbage in the cells six and seven to try and get that laid out before the winter hits. And then she'll bring in her budget. I talked to Ron at the Veterans Office and he said he's actually quite busy right now. Been doing quite a few referrals for him. So he's, he's definitely thinking that he needs to keep the two days to ensure that he covers the community.
Okay, Wayne?
We, uh, first of all, I guess the Weed Board, they had, had the budget, but there was some issues there, so I think we'll be finishing that this coming week and you'll be getting that over. And we met with, with the Mercer County Airport Authority, we got that budget done, I believe you probably received that. If not, it's done, it should be coming then. And we had our fly-in the other, last Saturday and the weather was pretty gorgeous. Pretty nice group. There was always room for more, but you know, economics and fuels and all these things kind of, but it was a nice turnout. It, it was a beautiful day for that, so that all went very, very well. And we got to thank the Hazen Fire Department for services that they did for, for the board there and, and thank the Board of Directors for the work that they do for us. And I think that's pretty well all I have at the time. Oh, well, then Jim will be in. Any questions, you can fire it to him. He's, he's the expert at it, so, yeah.
All right, let's take recess until eleven o'clock. We'll reconvene for the Witten Ordinance Public Hearing.
Wayne?
Todd?
What is your gas price right now?
Yeah.
I'm sure.
It's like one thousand nine hundred dollars.
Check that part. Yeah.
The spamer.
So what do you guys think?
I don't know.
Second. But I'm sure it's. Yeah, it's just. We're learning, we're learning how to do that and we did just a few weekend sessions. Yeah. Actually, not too bad. Like, must be. Like, she was like, oh, probably not, actually. Yeah. Well, here, let me stand up. It's comfortable for everyone. Oh. Oh, my gosh.
God, when you have Beulah Corridor, I want to get your wrists in the middle corridor. She crossed that corner like a cat moving on.
Well, it was funny, I was wearing, I was wearing like my nicer shoes. Boots with my heels on. And so I hope you're freezing. Maybe it's just on, like flats. Like, three inches. I was in the ground. Well, I was like, yeah, well, that's what it sounds like in your voice. Or my tennis shoe. Well, you know. And then I got him. I wore my old bra on yesterday. Just want to say. First rate. Those would be. Really? Okay. Probably maybe I should have. That's what it looks like thirty-eight. I still do a lot of running, so. Growing up, I stopped at forty. Yeah, that's what it was. It felt so. But I was walking. Oh, my gosh. Do you have a four? Anyway. How did I expect to keep talking? Are they almost everything like six forty? Three. Minor. Yeah. Tall, but I'm surprised. Like, ten-year-old's five six. Huh, so now she's taller than my friend. Still wants to sit on my lap. Little kid and she weighs like a hundred. I know, I would have that. Like, actually, I can't carry you. It's almost the other way. Yeah. It's almost the other way. I'm pretty glad. And I know what you did. Give your total. Some skis that would. It must be. Must be. Hey, my, my, my move, you only draft. Yeah, there you go. That's what it is. Now, this is. Your hands still right? We'll let, we'll. Made it just in time. Sign some sheets over here. I'm out of ink.
Eleven o'clock. All right, it's eleven o'clock. We'll reconvene the commission meeting. If I could get a motion to recess the regular meeting and open the public hearing for the Witten Ordinance, I could take that now.
So moved?
Motion by Jean. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne? All right, Marv?
Aye.
Although I. We're now open for the public hearing on the Witten Ordinance.
Board members, what I would ask you to do, please to consider, we received an updated copy from our auditor today. That's the one that we're going to be reviewing, as I understand, and what I'm ask is that you put today's date on the top of that one, so that's what we're always referring to.
Okay, we'll turn it over to State's Attorney Todd.
Alice had emailed this to me yesterday. And I got hung up at the hospital much longer because with the fourth being on Monday, the chemo patients for Monday were also put in to be done on Tuesday, which, God help those wonderful nurses. Since I wasn't going to be getting back till late, Alice was kind enough to read the changes in the exact language. I then did take a look at it about midnight last night and I've got a copy before me. My review of this indicates the changes that were talked about as they were talked about.
Cindy.
I think we have.
Cindy, take, take Keith one back.
Come on up, join me here.
Or you sit by, you sit by.
I don't bite if I do it at all my shots.
Todd, there were some updates made this morning. That's the latest one that.
Oh.
She gave us this morning. And the updates are on pages one, four, six, eleven, and fifteen.
I grabbed a copy.
Okay, that's.
Yeah.
So this is.
Okay.
Latest, latest as revised.
As we advise, yeah.
Okay.
So page numbers again, Marv? One?
One, four, six, eleven, and fifteen. And you have to number your documents, because.
The one's on page four under N four setbacks. That was discussed, not last meeting, but the meeting before.
That's correct. The first, the first change is on page one, though. Mr. Schwartz, there was a typo. The decimal was in the wrong spot, that's all it was. It should read point three megawatt.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, I saw that one. Alice and I, she read that one off to me yesterday. And then on six.
So page four, there wasn't any change from our previous discussion?
Yeah, in fact, I believe that's what was decided would be the best way to handle that. This, this is language that the commission chooses. My role in this is to make sure we don't have anything that's arbitrary or capricious or difficult to enforce. And I don't see any of those categories where I would need to object or get involved in any more than on page four.
The next one was page six, item T. We, at our last meeting, we haven't changed anything since then. And on page eleven, item three. There were just some wording was added to marry up with the motion.
And Alice had, had brought that to my attention yesterday by telephone as well. And that does fit with the discussion that was originally had, not just two meetings ago, but I think three, four meetings ago as well. It does bring it into accordance with the rest of what we have and the philosophy that's being looked at.
And the last correction was on page fifteen.
Yep. And that's just the fee for the conditional use permit. Of course, that is set by the commission. This does not seem to be an arbitrary and capricious amount. Looking around, it's in line with what other counties have done. So we're not all of a sudden being shocked. So we're not all of a sudden being shockingly cheap or shockingly high. Just one comment as an overall, Keith and I spoke by telephone. I finally get to meet him in person. I'm looking at, say, I know I met you twenty, thirty years ago, but. Memories are like checkbooks, they're never as big as you'd like them to be. Can't help, I have an overdeveloped smart aleck gene. The idea that I've saw from the commission, these are my observations as a fellow citizen, is that this is coming, whether good, bad, or indifferent, opposed, neutral, or in favor. This is coming. What I'm seeing the board working toward and what I see that these ordinances, as we've had these wrestled away, is to give the landowners, like Mr. Kessler and Joe, landowner out there, one wants them. This gives some protections to those individuals. This is still new enough technology where we're still learning. The board has discussed on numerous occasions these issues, during commission meetings, during sub-meetings, where the people have approached individual commissioners, or the people have approached me as the state's attorney. With what we have here, we can't force Mr. Kessler to have one of these in his backyard where he watches the shadow of it go along while his TV cellphone computer flickers because of the electronic interference. We've got a further setback in many places. And I want to go back to a statewide meeting that I participated in with Lad Erickson. And Lad threw up a picture of a place in Europe. I believe it's somewhere in Germany, my assessment from looking at the picture. Though, Lord knows, I haven't spent any time in Europe, but this is what I, the pictures looked like to me. And you have this stately old historic mansion home and supporting homes. And these towers stacked all the way around it. That's something we don't want in North Dakota and darn sure not in Mercer County. With the setbacks that you have and the power the commission has to grant variances. So if they come in and say, well, we're within this, but let's say the topography is such that, yeah, when you pull a tape measure, it's that far, but it's right on top of the hill over your farm, you can say, no, not there. Our adjoining landowner is objecting, and these are valid objections. You have that authority, you have that flexibility. We have a good legal framework that has not thrown out common sense. This is what my observations are. I believe that anything in here that myself or any of our attorneys can and will be able to successfully defend against challenges as long as each board dealing with it, because this isn't something that we're going to deal with in the next three months and never deal with it again. This is going to be with us until amended indefinitely. You have provisions in here that if a landowner is going to be affected for something that's not specifically here, that the commission can come in and say, no, because this landowner has these complaints and these need to be addressed. The flip side of that is that this is not so restrictive that where these things are appropriate, it's attractive enough for the industry to bring them in. Kind of maybe giving you a little bit of applause, finding that, that center line to meet in the middle while you're not forgetting your citizens. So I think you've done a good job. That's just one dumb attorneys. And by the way, I told all of you long ago, all of us attorneys are warped. We look at the world differently. That's why we need community members to come in and make sure that these warped lawyers aren't missing something. So at that point, I'd ask turn it over to Keith.
It is a public hearing, so Keith, if you get any comments.
Good morning and thank you for your time. I guess my first question is, and I think I know the answer, this is the complete ordinance?
Yes, this would be the complete ordinance.
I can field that question over. For the most part, Public Service Commission has captured almost all the rulemaking with regard to these wind towers. Same policy statewide. About the only thing left for the counties is actual placement. That's the one thing that the county still have the authority. So that's what we're addressing here.
Okay, with that, I have a question in, on page four and setbacks. Unless I'm missing it, I don't see the setback perimeter of a property line. From one landowner to another.
Repeat that question again.
Where is the setback from a property line?
A setback from property line would be number three. It'd be not less than one hundred and ten percent of the height of the turbine. So if it's a three hundred foot high turbine, it'd be three hundred and thirty feet from the property line.
So three hundred and thirty feet. Out by us, the turbines that are there, the blades are a hundred and eighty feet long. So you're already taking a hundred and eighty feet off of that three hundred.
No, by using the percentage, if this is a two hundred foot tower, and these are measured at their highest height, so one blade straight up. From that distance, say it's two hundred foot, that means they have to set back from the property line two hundred and twenty feet, a hundred and ten percent. If you read further, two hundred and twenty might be fine if we've got, let's say, a feedlot, shelter, not feedlot, a shelter up in the pasture. But if that two hundred and twenty feet is too close to your property line, you have the ability to come in and they can force further away.
The county can?
Yes.
Okay, because these wind towers, they have already proven it, that they can shed ice up to fourteen hundred feet from their location. So if they're three hundred feet from my property line, they can still throw ice eleven hundred feet into there, which could damage my equipment, my property, my livestock, my buildings, my family. That's what we're looking for, is protections to that. And on top of that is a shadow. Those things can shadow, depending on the time of year and time of day, just up over a mile, depending on location. I mean, if you have a wind tower up on a hill, you live down in a valley, these things are, and I have videos, if anybody wants to see them, of shadows in one of our properties, in a residence, that my son had to move off of because of the shadow flickering. And it's a nuisance. And even if a neighbor has one on their property, and that shadow was in a hayfield, it happened Saturday. My wife and I were out bailing Saturday morning so we could get finished up and go to the lake. And she gets sick from these things. The rotation of that shadow comes around about every second. You know, driving bananas. Some people can handle it, some can't handle it at all. So these are issues that I think are very important, not just to us and ourselves, but to any citizens of the county or the state, because they affect people differently. And with that, while, you guys want to have discussion on that before I go to the next point?
Mr. Kessler, I understand, and I saw your film where the bedroom, and I was actually shocked. And you did a very good job of showing that video. That was several months back. That's when we were writing up this ordinance. I'm not sure how to address that shedding ice fourteen hundred feet, that's a, that's a new one. That's the first time I've heard that. My son works on a wind farm, and I know that they can't get near them when there, when there's possible ice on the blades, and they use binoculars, stay the heck away. But I didn't know that was that far. Part of writing these procedures, with the information that we have at the time, we try to make the best decision we can. Subsequent to that, we receive more information. And I'm not sure how we would address that distance, except we do have a procedure for doing that. If somebody wants to modify this, but go ahead, Todd.
One other point, as I direct you to the page four, N setbacks, paragraph two. From occupied dwelling, commercial building, or publicly used structure or facility, the horizontal distance between the center of the turbine monopole and any occupied structure shall not be less than fifteen hundred feet unless otherwise negotiated with the landlord of the set structure. So with the fifteen hundred feet, honestly, Keith has brought this up with the fourteen hundred foot, we're barely there. I believe four meetings ago, we talked at twenty-five hundred feet from occupied structures and then fifteen hundred feet. I, I understand Mr. Kessler's concern. I've seen other people who experienced severe vertigo being near these wind towers.
Hi.
I had a fisherman, I had a fisherman buddy of mine, we've been out on waves that would make an old sea dog ill, no problem. We got to the other side, to the south side toward the towers, and for Troy, first time in his life he ever had that experience, we had to come off.
Wayne, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I don't know if this could work or not, but I, I do like that further setback. And if they wanted that closer to family dwelling, the, the owner of the farm can, can do this agreement between that particular homeowner and, and that, and the farm owner. But I think, I think we'd be wiser to go to further distance because Keith has experienced this, I haven't experienced it. But they're right, they're not very far from me. And like he said, you, we do want to protect the public. And if, if that home dweller says, well, I have no issue or this and that, well, that's a negotiation between the home dweller and, and the contractor. But at least we set that up and tried to protect because he's gone through that. Now, I don't know about these, this ice thing. You would think the farm does not want to have turbines unbalanced, and they would lock, lock the turbine down. You know, on the, if you've got ice on your blades, the sooner you stop them blades, the sooner you're going to have very expensive damage. But I, I'm not a farmer, so I, I don't know.
And if I can comment on that, yes, you're, you're correct. And they will lock those out during an ice storm or an ice situation. But look at the scenario that happened last summer in west of Hebron, North Dakota. And that, that farm is what, three years old, four years old, pretty new, pretty new equipment. And one of those blades came off in a storm and, and went about a thousand feet. So where's that going to end up at?
I don't, I don't know if we can write an ordinance for X of God, though. You know, tornadoes, monster storms, but, I mean, I don't have a problem with increasing the occupied structure distance. Do we have twenty-five hundred before?
Yeah, we did have twenty-five hundred.
On May second, I proposed, no, May twelfth, I proposed, on item number two, I proposed twenty-five hundred feet.
Right, yep.
And on item four, I proposed a hundred and fifty percent versus a hundred and ten. And during that discussion with the information that was presented there, it was chosen not to take advantage, not to use those recommendations.
Well, setback of fifteen hundred feet is approximately like a, a ninety acre. Might I just try to do the math real quick? Twenty-five hundred feet would be basically from an occupied structure, they'd have to stay, like, it'd have to be the next quarter. Couldn't even be that adjacent quarter.
It's just shy of a half a mile. So it, it would be within the quarter.
Exactly. You have to hope residents was on the edge. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I have a property that's right on the fence line, basically.
Right. Anyway, that was discussed on May twelfth, and I'll just talk about number two for the time being. That can be, this is a hearing, I'm not sure if we can make revisions to this or not, the hearing.
From the findings of the hearing.
Pardon me?
You can't, if from the findings of this hearing, you can make adjustments. That's the whole purpose of the public meeting, is to make sure that we're not missing something.
Okay.
Okay.
When we're dealing with something like this, it's got to be a process.
Okay.
That process is, if you disinformation, if the board feels that this is appropriate, you're completely within your legal rights to change that back to the twenty-five hundred.
Okay, just to be clear, it was fifteen hundred feet. It was suggested at our meeting to go to twenty-five hundred, so we wouldn't be moving it back, we would be making a revision.
I think for the fifteen hundred feet game, is that's where some of the counties are at.
That. Yeah, that was the standard of, you're absolutely right, yeah. And we, right.
That's what it states in the paper. It was in here that it was first fifteen hundred, then it went to twenty-five hundred. And then Marvin had suggested they go back to fifteen hundred feet because of other counties.
Not, not true.
The, the paper isn't true?
That's correct.
Okay.
It was, I'm re, looking at the original, it was fifteen hundred feet. The twenty-five hundred was suggested by myself. And per the discussion from other individuals, it stayed at fifteen hundred feet.
So it was on the table, but we never formally went with the.
Right, it was, it was decided not to change it, not to change it to twenty-five hundred feet. And at that time, it was because we.
We were trying to be uniform with other counties.
Yeah, just, just what Todd had said, that the uniformity with neighboring counties. And then they wonder, well, why are you at that extreme deal? But as, again, as we discussed, that landowner can get closer if, if, if he chooses to do that. But I think to protect that landowner that probably doesn't know what he's getting into.
Well, very simply, uniformity is not the end all be all of our materials. No. What's right for Oliver County, what's right for Morton County, may not be right for Mercer County. Neither of those two counties have the lake that we have up here. That's something that has been talked about quite a bit. That's been built into a certain degree with not affecting other industries such as tourism, coal, oil, et cetera. Can't leave out agriculture. One of these out in the middle of a full section of land pasture, that's one thing. One of these on the corner next to the farmstead, now we got a problem. When we talked about the twenty-five hundred feet, that can be defensible as long as we have a rationale for it that makes sense. That's taking volumes of case law and condensing it down into what they're really trying to say. The fact that we have a landowner here who's had a negative experience. We had some experience now that we had not heard about the blade flying a thousand feet last summer.
And definitely the ice issue either, I hadn't heard of that either.
That's the first time I heard of it.
So I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, I, I appreciate his input on this, and let, let me first say, I'm not an advocate of wind towers or wind farms, okay? But if we were to change this to such a distance that you don't want, you know, any of these, whatever. But you don't want it so close to your property, now I own a quarter beside you, and we make it so restrictive that I can't even have one on my quarter of land because you're opposed to it, but I want one. Uh, you know, that's where I start to see issues. Now, yes, I can, it could be a hundred and fifty-one acres away from your, your property. If you're right on, on your property line, your house is right on your property line, then it could be right on the edge of my property. So I'm, you know, I want to somewhat advocate for the property owner beside you that may want one on his. that may want one on his property. And I'm not going to go down this road about that property owner's place of residence, but I have issues with that too. So I know we're trying to get to a happy place here. And I don't have the full answer to it, because I won't have a wind tower in my backyard, because I live in town. But I feel for those who live out in the country, and I've seen these wind towers like in their back door almost, and I'm just, I don't feel that's right. So I don't have an answer for you.
I like Wayne's thoughts on this, because you can make it a twenty-five hundred foot setback from the occupied residence, and you can go twelve hundred and fifty, or whatever, from the property line. That is a distance that should work for most, any application. I'm not going to say one size will fit all, but it's going to help. But like Wayne said, the landowner that it affects, he can waive that and say, "Hey, I want it eight hundred feet from..." I mean, that's everybody's personal business, what they want. But the person that doesn't want it, and they shouldn't have it kind of stuck down their throat, because somebody else might lose out on a couple bucks. Most people around us in agriculture are there for a reason, they're there for agriculture, not to buy land to get a wind tower or a coal mine, or, you know, whatever's common.
Well, and the point to that, I like that you brought up too, is to make sure that the community is aware of what are some of the potentials that could come. So that way they know, this is why the commission put it this way, or this is why they recommend this. It doesn't mean they have to go with it, but this is why. So that they're aware, in case something does come up, or if something happens, they've been informed about what are some possibilities that could happen.
So to further discuss this, if we look at a court, a standard quarter section, it's twenty-six forty by twenty-six forty, because a full section is fifty-two eighty by fifty-two eighty. So if we went to the twenty-five hundred, depending on where the occupied dwelling was on the adjacent quarter section, you could still have it in that quarter section. If it meant from property lines, from things like that. So you wouldn't totally restrict it if you went to twenty-five hundred. It would just be, you might have to find that right corner for the distance, so you're not essentially eliminating an entire quarter section from possibility.
And then just let me point, the way this is written, it looks like we're thinking of twenty-five hundred. It's twenty-five hundred from the occupied residence, and then it's a hundred and ten percent from the property line. So that becomes important. One suggest... I'm taking off my state's turning hat, just putting on.
Yep.
I'm exposing my redneck, glorious lack of sophistication at these times. I think the twenty-five hundred makes more sense. These things will shed ice, they will keep running as long as the ice is not building up to bring them completely out of balance. It's like an airplane propeller. Every once in a while, you find a plane flying with some light rim ice, and all of a sudden, you're hearing these really concerning sides up against the side of your plane, and it's a little bit ice flinging. So that's what I'm visualizing in my head, is a redneck pilot. And I can see these things set up to fifteen, fourteen hundred feet. Twenty-five hundred feet, you've got more than a two-hundred percent safety factor. If you take a chunk of ice the size of this table that I'm sitting on, and fling that a thousand yards, I pray to God no human beings on here, and I, again, butcher, it's a beef cow. And I've scattered amber. As a safety factor, the county would be justified in moving to twenty-five hundred feet with this information, also the information of last summer, one of these blades breaking and flying a thousand feet. Twenty-five hundred, once again, we've got the two-hundred percent safety factor. And the engineers who come around here telling you they're going to redesign a new bridge, they designed for two-hundred percent safety factor. Common sense dictates that this might be a better route. I think it will alleviate a lot of the landowners' concerns, which would mean that you're probably going to be able to attract, you're going to have some interest in it. We know there's going to be people, I've heard it anecdotally, I have not been able to find proof of it, but there's a dairy farmer in northern Minnesota who asked them to put it right off of his milking parlor feedlot area, on the condition he has free electricity for life.
Yeah, I've heard of some of those.
Yeah, I have not been to the farm, I have not talked to anybody involved in that deal, but that keeps going around. I can, on the way to Grand Forks, between Lakota and Grand Forks, you'll see a small tower out there that sits on a farm. Some people want these in their backyard.
Okay, Mr. Chairman and board members, for discussion, I move that we change item two under setbacks from fifteen hundred feet to twenty-five hundred feet.
Okay, motion by Marv to extend the setback distance from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred feet, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion?
On the, um, no, I want to, I need some clarity here. So, right now, we're, the way we've, on the twenty-five hundred feet, that effectively becomes about a hundred, a hundred and fifty-one acres, and a hundred and ten percent effectively becomes about thirteen acres. That'd be about a hundred and sixty-four acre width from your house. So my quarter of land adjacent to you wouldn't be able to put a wind tower on. But I've heard this discussion here, it says in number four, unless a variance is granted by Mercer County Commission Board. So are we, was I hearing and or understanding that the commission could grant someone less than that distance?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And that way, if the landowner who's going to be affected wants it closer, so that landowner can generate the income from that being on his property, it can be done. Now, let's talk about the quarter that you're talking about, and that's affecting Keith. Keith would have to be okay with it, and so would you. Now, there is a legal point that you kind of brought in, that this is a good time to talk about it. We have a difference in distance between N two and N four, a hundred and ten percent versus the twenty-five hundred feet. If you're going to have, they can come up with different distances, so they can be in compliance with four, but out of compliance with two. The board must put in there something of, if they're conflicting, which one takes precedent.
When I was doing, just figuring a two-hundred foot tower, which that's probably way short. I'm sure they're well over that, I think.
I just use two-hundred for easy calculation.
That's really short.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a comment?
Sure.
Gene, I think, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but the way you explained it, you'd have the twenty-five hundred feet plus the hundred and ten. The hundred and ten isn't added to the twenty-five hundred.
It would have, it has to stay off the property line, though, setback from the property line. So now, the, so on my quarter of land, it can't be right on the edge, it's got to come back to two-hundred and twenty feet. And so I'm moving closer to your property, to your house. But I got to say, twenty-five hundred feet away from your house, so here we are, we'll cross over.
Well, you have a, you essentially have an arc, though, not straight over. So like if, say your house is almost in the middle of the section, so you'd be in the southeast corner.
Then I'm safe. Then I can get my wind tower on my property. I'm talking, he's right on the edge. His house sits five feet off his property line, and I know there's, there's issues with that, but that's, let's just use that for numbers, okay? And he's exactly in the middle of his quarter. If you want to call it horizontally, vertically, north and south, he's right in the middle, then effectively, he's, my quarter section beside him, it could go possibly way down in the far corner. But I don't know the, like you said, the arc. So it could go there. I'm just saying, that this, I don't want to, see where we're going with, with my property. Well, I won't have a wind tower on my property, but I'm just saying.
Now, let me just look at your hypothetical, and see if I'm understanding this, please. All right, so if your quarter section, you've got, you could put it in your corner and meet the twenty-five hundred, but you'd be in violation of the setback from the property line.
If it's way in the corner opposite his, then I, then I'd be within, it'd be beyond the twenty-five hundred, and then the setback would be the two-hundred and twenty feet. It's still, it would still make it, yes.
We can still do it, even if the twenty-five hundred would put it closer than the setback from the property line. Because in that circumstance, that landowner who wants one on his or her property, and say, to stay twenty-five hundred feet from Keith's property, or any other person's.
His house.
His house.
Yeah, his house. If I say property, I end all of it. Thank you, that makes it clear. To be twenty-five hundred foot from his residence, I can't do it with the setback the other direction from my property line. That landowner and the tower company can come in and ask for variance as to that property line setback requirement. So if we're looking, as we used to say here in Mercer County decades ago, your address is Thirtieth and Plum, thirty miles off from Plum back in the hills. And there's nobody else out there for thirty miles. And you got somebody has the quarter. Moving that closer to the edge of your property line, so that we can protect one landowner's rights of having these two close, and another property owner for being able to have free use of their land, the county would grant that variance, because otherwise, our purpose is to keep this from bothering people.
Yep.
If I can put it very simply.
And I think my question is...
So that could be accomplished, so that tower could go on that hypothetical piece of land?
My question and concern has, I think, been pretty much answered. I could still get it in the corner of my property. What I'm looking at is down the future, if we have individual property owners coming in here and saying we're infringing on their property rights, you know, this is not allowing me to do, and that's been quite a, quite a statement lately, is infringing on my property rights. But within all the discussion, I do agree, I can still put one in the corner of my land. I should be able to get far enough away from his house where I meet the requirements of this zoning ordinance. Okay, I just wanted to bring those points up. Perpendicular from his house, I couldn't do it, but I move it down a couple hundred yards. Okay, thank you for that clarity, Travis.
Let's just another way. Where the property rights and free use of land come about, we have situations where, and this has happened, example in Monmouth County. For decades, there was this feedlot operation right down on, I forget the name of the creek, it's one of my favorite fishing lakes. But on that creek, this feedlot had been there long before anybody built from the interstate to center. There was nothing between there except for farms, way off in the distance. This feedlot was bought. Okay, thirty years ago, somebody developed for rural housing, I can't remember if they were one or two acre lots, and put it right next to the feedlot. And I stood with the feedlot operator, you moved to this nuisance. But now let's reverse that, because what we're doing to bring in wind towers is, to some people, this is a nuisance. If you build next to a wind tower, you can't come in here and complain and make them tear it down. Common sense. But on the same note, if I want to put in a rendering plant, I went to M D S U, we could smell hell beef every once in a while. That plant was there back in one form or another, close to statehood, if I remember my history correct. We wouldn't allow that to be built today, right next to West Fargo. We wouldn't allow that to be built a mile outside the city limits of Hazen. So as far as free use, and that's kind of where the case law has come down. If this is considered a nuisance, we can regulate keeping the distances, so.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion from the commission to extend the setback distance from occupied dwelling to twenty-five hundred feet? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Almoda, aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Almoda, that motion passes.
Now, the other question I raised is if we have a conflict between four and two. Who's just controlling?
What's the conflict?
Essentially, if you created that area, and all of a sudden, there's nothing in that whole quarter section available, what would control?
Express your conflict, please.
All right, we can be twenty-five hundred feet away from the property. But, I'm impacted.
No, it wouldn't be a...
In compliance with four, but not in compliance with two, do you have to meet both? Because that's the way I would try to interpret it, but at least something open.
Yes, you'd have, you'd have to be, meet both, which can be done. I can still put a wind tower on my quarter of land, and get away from his house.
So on granting the permits, you're making require both setbacks?
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Then we should be all right.
Okay.
I'm just looking to future.
If I only owned the forty acres beside him, I'm all...
In twenty years, none of us are going to be in this sort of house. I hope I'm not scared, still here twenty years from now.
I think, yeah, I think we're good there.
Okay, just so that, doing this eyes wide open.
Okay, what's your next point, please, Mr. Kessler?
I think that covers the setback part. The noise, everybody has to deal with that, so I think I'll probably just leave that alone. But I want to point out one thing, with the noise is, is you have fifty decibels three hundred feet away from anybody's occupied dwelling, and with this setback, you'll meet that goal.
Yeah.
With the twelve hundred feet, twelve, was it fifteen hundred feet one?
It was kind of...
Kind of close, wasn't it?
Yeah, depending on temperature, humidity, and all that, you'd be in trouble there. And those violations that get reported, complaints or whatever to the P S E, it gets to be a long, long drug-out battle with some of that, so. The other thing I was going to say with the noise is, and we're not going to get away with it, I mean, definitely, I mean, we're not going to, because you can hear those things for a couple miles. But they do, they do take your peace and quiet and enjoyment away from your property. And I own a little bit of property, and I love to go out fixing fence, stuff like that, in the spring of the year, listen to the birds, and, you know, the grouse and all that cackling. And when those things are running, you don't hear anything, but your brain just about winding up to go berserk. But that's a whole nother deal. Other than that, I guess the only other comments I have were, as far as the county, I'll give you fair warning, if you do go ahead and, you know, you get some wind farms in the county, and they get busy. We had this in Oliver County. I own land in both counties, I border, my one property is right on the county line. But the roads, what happened over there is, the roads get turned over to the developer when they're developed, and then they go back to the county after things are done. They beat the heck out of the roads, not just during construction, but afterwards on their maintenance. They drive around, these developers, they got one guy in each pickup, and there'll be three, four of them going to the same tower. And they don't drive slow in there, they're always spinning their wheels like they're, like hell's on fire, because they're in a hurry for whatever reason. But they're kind of hazardous, plus they tear up the roads, they're very hard on the roads.
Interesting.
And overweight, like when they bring a big crane in, there's like twenty-five to thirty semi-loads to get that crane set on site. So that crane comes in and goes out, and dust is a huge problem. They've dusted out our hay ground, our pastures, our ditches. I mean, you can't make ditching unless after rain. So you got a tight window there. But there's a lot of things that, you know, with these, there's a lot of growing pains, definitely.
Anything else on the ordinance?
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Appreciate your input, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Any, anyone else from the public? It's a public hearing on the ordinance, so if anybody else wishes to speak. Go on once. Cindy?
Oh, Cindy? Oh, Cindy?
What page is that on?
Under D, the, the last page with that.
Last page?
Yeah, page fifteen.
The conditional use permit fee? Is that what you're here about Cindy?
Yeah, we're right at the end there, it says.
Initial application fee?
Says by the applicant prior to the building permit application.
Because we don't have building permits. I know you don't get building permits, but unless you get them before you lift more or any.
Are you, are you looking at would be?
Page fifteen, it's.
Very last page, it mentions building permit application, we don't have building permits.
I'm seeing conditional use permit, where am I missing this?
Under D.
Right after that? Conditional use permit fee remitted by the applicant prior to the building permit application.
Cindy, we took out building permit application and put down conditional use permit, would that correct that?
Yeah.
Okay. For discussion.
I'll make a motion up.
Or a move that we replace under D on page fifteen.
Prior to the applicant, prior to the conditional use permit application? Is that what you're saying? Change that from.
Remove the words prior to building permit application and replace with conditional use permit.
Would we even have to have that, the conditional use permit with remainder of the conditional permit, user permit fee remitted? Could we just stop there?
And not have by the.
Right.
Right, just cross that out, because it already says conditional use permit fee remitted. Does that sound okay Cindy?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't have to repeat it.
Right?
Right.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
By the applicant, period?
No, if we, if we do that, it doesn't tell us when the remainder is due.
Right.
By leaving that in, by putting something in, it tells us when the remainder is due.
Right, because you have the initial thousand dollars and then you have the permit fee, which is based on a cost.
Percentage.
Cost percentage.
I would, I would leave it in here because it tells us when that remainder of the conditional use permit would be due.
So we have to say by the applicant prior to the issuance of the conditional use permit?
Yes, prior to obtaining conditional use permit.
Does that make sense to everybody? So we'd have to say prior to the issuance of the conditional use permit?
We have to help Ellis out with the motion, we're jumping all over with words.
Well, we haven't, we haven't done the motion yet.
You don't have, yeah, we got to get the wording correct first.
Yeah, I started with the motion.
So your motion was to.
Change building the conditional use.
Prior to.
Should just say prior to.
Receiving conditional use permit.
Application.
No, not the application.
No need to word application.
Okay.
Should just say prior to receiving conditional use permit.
Prior to receiving.
That will work legally.
Conditional use permit. You're doing that as a motion?
Let's help Ellis out here so that she gets it simple, straight.
Yep.
I move that under item D, page fifteen. Second to the last sentence. After the word prior, we remove building permit application and replace with receiving conditional use permit.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
Let me stop just a second, then we also need to cross out applications after permit.
Correct.
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 Exactly part of the motion, we take care of this all in one.
Yes.
Because it's kind of confusing on my end of, it's the opposite of how we do it, we normally keep the whole fee ahead of time, more than.
But would they have, would they have a cost in there at the time of the application?
What?
The, the thing is, is that there's the thousand dollar fee and then the conditional use permit is based on the cost to erect the turbine. Would they have those costs bases at the time of application?
Yeah, they would.
If they have it at the time of application, they could pay that fee and once it went through, the thousand dollars is non-refundable, but if it failed, then the additional cost would be refunded, if I understand that correctly.
Right. Right.
Because all we stated was the thousand dollar is non-refundable, if.
Right.
The permit fee, which is a calculation, if it doesn't go through, they can get refunded the permit fee, but not the application fee.
Right.
Because the way you're wording it here, they wouldn't pay that other fee until it comes past, do they? Is that what you're saying?
They can come and pay the application fee, but they can't get the conditional use permit until they pay that percentage.
And they pay that percentage after it comes to the commission, does that follow?
They could pay it at any time.
Yeah, they could pay it at any time.
But they're not going to get issued it unless they pay.
Pay it upfront, they get done before the commission. See that, yes, this looks like it's going to be a goal, then pay it. They don't get the conditional use permit till they've paid that fee.
Paid that fee.
So the objective here is they got to pay a thousand dollars for the application.
Paperwork portion.
And then pay the remainder upon receiving the application.
Once they pay that, then they can get their conditional use.
The remainder.
Yeah.
We have to word it that way then.
Well, it, it's, it's in there, I mean, it's.
It says.
Okay.
Use permit with the remainder of the conditional use permit fee remitted by the applicant prior to conditional use permit.
Prior to receiving the conditional use permit?
Right.
Right.
Okay, so you're, an application of one thousand shall be payable at time of application of the conditional use permit with the remainder of the conditional use permit fee remitted by the applicant prior to receiving the conditional use permit.
Correct.
Lot of conditional use permit language there, but.
Yes.
Okay. That's Marvin's motion, I understand.
Yeah. Alice, can you?
I'm good with that.
The motion that.
I understood it.
So the motion is an application fee, a thousand dollars shall be payable at the time of the application. A conditional use permit with the remainder of the conditional use permit fee remitted by the applicant prior to receiving the conditional use permit.
That was not my motion. It is not.
Well, it, it incorporates everything.
It incorporates it, but it was not my motion.
No, it wasn't, I know.
Yeah.
That's why I asked.
That's the ultimate language.
That's, that's the ultimate language. That would be.
Okay.
My motion was.
So we either.
Replace the building permit application words with receiving conditional use permit, that was my motion.
Yeah.
But what Alice just read is the whole sentence, did that change?
That would.
Right, that incorporated the change.
I'm okay with it, as long as everybody understands it.
Okay.
Okay, so we either, we either have to vote down Marvin's motion or we amend his original motion.
No, hi- his motion is fine. What Alice read is what that sentence would be.
I agree with Jean.
Written.
You want, you want, okay.
I agree, I agree with Jean.
Yeah, it's different language.
It's different language than my motion.
Yep, we either have to vote no on his motion and entertain a new motion, but.
Well, we haven't seconded the motion.
We didn't have a second?
We haven't had a second yet.
How in the heck are we discussing it?
We're getting a little out of.
Sorry.
Yeah, we're getting a little out of order, so is there a second to Marv's motion?
I'm going to repeat it. I move under item D, page fifteen, to remove the wording, the permit, building permit application and replace with receiving the conditional use permit.
Okay, motion is to remove building permit application wording and replace with receiving.
The conditional use.
The conditional use permit. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second?
What's the difference between your wording and what we're saying we want?
Nothing, he's just stating what his motion was.
Exactly what we're saying we want to do.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, second by Jean, any discussion? Everybody understands what, what's happening, we're just removing some words and adding some words? Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Anything else?
Don't make it too difficult.
Yeah, don't make it too difficult. Okay.
You were correct with Jean.
Can I get a motion to close the public hearing and reconvene the normal meeting?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Wayne, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Coming in, Keith.
The motion passes, thanks Keith.
Thank you.
All right, next up we got Jim, Maintenance Projects.
I don't know if they can hear me with this mask on, please. Can you hear me all right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I handed out you out, these are bringing back some of these projects we talked about in the first meeting in June. Um, I think we'll start with the, the sewer pump system. I gave you a proposal from Electric Pump and another one from Dakota Pump and Control. Um, I had Electric Pump revise theirs. Uh, we talked about trying to get the price down, so I had them eliminate that, that grinder, that inline grinder. And, uh, both of these companies, what they're proposing is pretty much the same thing. Replace the pumps, replace the control panel and replace the float control system that turns the pumps on and off. So just going through that, um, this will be two new pumps. That each are proposing, all new piping. Like I said, um, electric pump, just for the pumps and the piping and the, uh, float system. We're looking at twenty-nine, three fifteen for that. Then we'll have to add, you need a control panel to operate these pumps, they bring them on and off as the level of the, um, fluid in the, in the pit, you know, changes. And that panel comes in at fifteen thousand, six thirty-five. So if you add both of those together, for just doing that, portion is forty-four thousand, nine fifty. Okay, I contacted Dakota Pump. Uh, this was the original company that originally put these other existing pumps in. And the same, some, same scenario, he's got two new grinder pumps. All the fittings, a new hatch, and just so you know, Electric Pump has a new hatch, because we got to put a new hatch on also. And this includes the, uh, the panel, the control panel. And their total price for the whole project is thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. And he did tell me that actually tomorrow prices are going up, Dakota Pump said. He, he told me, I had planned on coming in at June and he thought it was a week after that, but he's got another week, so. We're good with this price, yeah, so it seems like daily prices change on everything.
My only concern, Jim, is I noticed it said price mailed for only one week and this was dated six twenty-two, so I'm glad, I appreciate you checking on that.
Yeah, I did call him and that's what he said, so, but he'd need to know today, so.
So is he a recommendation now, Dakota Pump?
I would suggest that, um, you know, it will still be have that catch basket in there for the large items that can't go through the pump, which is a pain. I did talk with this Dave at Dakota Pump and Control and we discussed, he's not really in favor of an inline grinder to start with, so he really didn't want to give me a quote with that. And the reason is, is he said if you get any metal go through there, yes, it'll break it up, but you're still going to have metal that goes into these other pumps, which isn't really good for the normal pumps, which does make sense after you think about it, so.
The grinders are made for grinding, but not grinding metal.
Yeah, they're made for paper and cloth and.
Right.
Things like that, and it, it, it just happened the day after we talked about this in June, there was a necklace and some other stuff that did get stuck in that basket, just coincidence, but it does happen, so.
Is there any warranty with this?
Um. What was there? Okay, just, just so you know, on Dakota Pump and Control, what we have right now is, another thing is a float system where there's four floats in there, and Marvin looked at it. You got a bottom float and then four, and then as your level comes up, these floats come up, turn pumps on, next one turns pumps off. They don't do that anymore, they have what they call a fog rod. And that, uh, does the same thing, there's no floats, you don't have floats floating around in the pit and getting tangled up and, because it is kind of a, a jumbled up mess down there with four floats floating in the water. And if they get tangled or stuck on something, then it doesn't work properly. And I know that has a ten-year warranty. Um, I do have the paperwork here. These are hydramatic pumps. And they have a blade system. I guess that I don't know, to be honest with you, I didn't think about asking that, so.
Be basically standard manufacturer warranties for.
Right.
For items and.
Say, I'd say different things have, would have different warranty levels, would be my assumption.
It'd be like you said, a standard.
I don't see anything on the, on the paperwork that he sent me on his view.
And can you remind me again too, Jim, how much monies did you have in the funding for this?
Eighty thousand I have in.
Eighty thousand, okay, thank you.
Because we were going to look at this and maybe look at some of that carpeting issues too, you know, so.
Mr. Chairman, due to the dollar amount on this one, I would like to address this one specifically before we include the other ones.
Okay.
I, I'm just going to, for discussion, I move to approve Dakota Pump Control for the installation of the pumps and flow controller, control panel.
Okay, motion by Marv to approve the Dakota Pump and Control estimate, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion?
Um, I'll just throw one more point on that I didn't mention to you also, I know you wanted to know a downtime.
Yeah.
For how long we'd be down, and he told me it'd be one day. He says roughly eight hours, so.
Okay.
That's not too bad a turnaround, I didn't think. And I did talk to Colin, jail administrator, and he says the only thing we would have to get also is probably, uh, one of those portable toilets for in the jail, Sally Port. To use in all parts of jail. And if you notice the electrical, we need to do electric, electrician costs. He says that Dave from Dakota Pump said it's minimal, they can mount everything, it'll just be connecting everything. I did talk to Mark Olson, and he, I thought he wanted the panel and everything mounted, so Mark quoted me just a rough idea without looking at things, seven hundred dollars, between seven and thousand, so I'd. That'll be pretty much a minimal cost that'll be added to this to get this. that'll be pretty much a minimal cost, that'll be added to this to get this completed. And they would do it all in the same day, so.
Any other discussion?
Just wanna mention that I did review this with Jim this morning. What he has in that pit, I would not want to do any work on myself, in regard to you.
Any other discussion?
I just wanna let Jim know that I really appreciate you following up on this and, and making sure that the prices are accurate as well too.
I'm sorry I couldn't make it last time, but I had this done last meeting, but this is way to go.
Understandable. Yep. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
All vote aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes.
Okay, I will let them know that today then, um. Then we come to the interiors by France, quote, um, I tried to call.
Jim, can I interrupt you for a second? Travis may have to sign that.
Okay.
That'd be, that'd be a deal.
Shall we get the price?
Shall we get the price?
I didn't mean to interrupt, but I didn't want to forget.
All right, Jim, continue please.
Cause then we had talked about the last time about that interiors by France, with doing some carpet replacement and some LVT and stuff like that. I tried to call the guy, it beans I got that quote in April, you know, that's, we're going on three months ago. I tried to call the guy that gave me the quote, he wasn't in, he's on vacation, of course, today. So, I wanted to ask him again if there's any price changes, beans it's been so long.
Right.
Normally they only do them for thirty days, so I couldn't ask him that. So beans this isn't that critical, maybe we could wait on this until.
I think that sounds appropriate, Jim.
To get an accurate price.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
From them, if that's all right with you.
Yeah, oh yes.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Again, just information, I, I looked at all these jobs this morning, and then we are gonna wait, but based on the information that I saw this morning, I'm leaning that dispatch area definitely needs to be done, and the other ones could possibly be postponed to next year. Just for consideration.
I'll have them update the prices and everything, and then, like he said, we can pick and choose what sections we wanna do, and we don't have to do it all, we can.
Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Jim.
So if you could, maybe, I will not be here at the next meeting, I'll be on vacation, so we could look at it at the August, the first meeting, maybe, put that back on.
You have a good vacation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, uh, is David Stevens here?
I would like to plug my computer.
Sure, sure. Ends and outs, I'll have a plug. I guess. Jim? Has anybody, Jim?
Jim?
Have you ever plugged anything in so that he can project to that? Have you ever plugged?
Can it run off of his computer and go up to our screen?
Just plug it in, right?
Right, as easy as that, right?
Yeah, he's got it hooked up.
He plugged.
He's gonna find it now.
Yeah, he actually has run the training for us on it. He does have the green part.
Then he's just an A B switch?
I'd just be pushing buttons and stuff, probably not appropriate, probably not good.
And the other, try number three.
That's not gonna work. Right, you're like, if I won't even push that. You're like, whoa, this is getting worse.